So I just wanted to kick this off by saying thank you first for all of you being here. I think today, as we go through this process with Rick, I just encourage all of us, every single one of us, to be present and participate. And I look forward to seeing what we come up with at the end of all of this. That will help hopefully build that foundation for us to work better and be more successful, not only as a unit, but for the community as a whole. Anthony, do you want to introduce? Say something?
All I'll say together about bathrooms, I take it most importantly, bathrooms being the camp in the door, hang a lamp and do what I can do. But you know, drinks, stuff like that, all down the county. Lots of these liver, not the fancy box of lunch. Hopefully we got something that you like. That's it. We appreciate it. Back here, just listening. That's it. Don't play on the test plane unless asking, please, buddy.
Well, let me introduce Rick. Rick Rishetti. You know, we received his name from the League of Municipalities. So Rick, you want to introduce yourself a little bit and let everybody kind of know what you do?
Nobody knows what I do. I'll do my best. My name is Rick Rishetti. And to tell you a little bit about myself, originally from Bloomville, West Virginia, which is just north of here a little ways. Been in Raleigh since 1983 via a short trip to the Bronx, Fort Worth University. Worked for the city of Raleigh really three different times, full time each town since 1987. And my role there was evolving, but it started in training development, where it became more organization development. And I helped the city in some big changes in some strategic ways over the time that I was there. Retired, early retired in 2018. I think it was 2018. It's hard to remember back. But I've had my own private consulting, training and coaching practice for decades. And I wanted to, you know, see if I could make a goal there. And so far, so good. But part of that has been connecting with the League of Municipalities and with the school government edge up faculty there as well. And I go out and do stuff like this with municipalities, small being even large. A lot of work with small municipalities over the last few years, so that's been good. Live in Lake Forest, just lived there, been in the Raleigh area since age three. Do your south trip to South Florida. That was fun for my wife and daughter. And they moved back. Did I help them?
Sure.
So I want to thank you for being here. I know this is Saturday. It's pretty. And for me, we're near a lake and out in woods. Doesn't get much better than the beach. And being near the water, so I know we're all giving up something to be here. I want to spend a little time getting to know you before we kind of jump in. What we're going to do today is, I would say akin to strategic planning. It's going to be close. We'll see how far we can get. The whole purpose, I'll say more about this later. The whole purpose of strategic planning really is to get people on, even if you're not going to be sitting on the same page per se, gets everybody to kind of see the page that we're, you know, we're on and kind of have a common view of some of what life is like in this system. And so then say, well, what do you want to do about that to make it to something for? So with that, for now, what I'd like to do is do a couple of things. What does that like to go around the room? And I'd like to briefly introduce yourselves. And we'll kind of go through two or three rounds of this. The first, what I want you to do is tell me who you are and what you hold is. And how long you've been on the council. And we'll start with that.
All right. This is Stacy Phillips. I have been on the board since 2019. I'm a commissioner and I'm serving my first term as mayor for town.
Lance Munder and I am a commissioner of my second term, same as Stacy and Zeb.
Amber Gobats, and it's my first term. That's good.
So like a couple of months?
Yeah.
Five years. Welcome. She's still trying to decide if jumping in is a good thing. Did I jump in? I'm in. You're in. Oh, thank you. Thank you for letting me play this.
Hi, Rick. Good morning, everybody. My name is Derek Partey. I'm also like the commissioner who served the people of Huntersville. And I've been commissioner like Amber for two months.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It seems long to that, doesn't it? Seems like two decades already, right? I agree too.
So I'm Melinda Bales and I am in my first term as mayor. And I served for 10 years as a town commissioner.
Dan Boone, I'm starting my fourth term.
Rob Kenble, third term commissioner.
All right. So this is what I'm going to ask you to do. Let's see. So let's see. So you two together, you two together, and you two together. So what I want you, you all to do is, what questions do you have about, you know, being on the council and your commissioner? I want you all to think about what advice you can get. And I want you two to say what you've learned so far in your first term and a half. All right? So stand up, gather a pair up, and get as close as you can with each other. I don't want to be sensitive to COVID things. And so it takes just three minutes to do that. So questions, advice, and successes and values would be that. Successes and values should have been.
Your fractious.
Yeah. I mean, really, you thought you were elected this morning in December.
So talk to each other.
Yeah, this morning in December was. The COVID in February, and then we didn't meet. February is our last person meeting.
March 16th was last year.
Was it?
Yeah.
What a tear on marker. That's what I remember. It'll bleed into me. I felt unhealed for two years.
I was a little bit scared. There's a lot of things that I was like, that's what was going to happen.
I helped you try. But I feel unhealed. I think that's a strong personality to learn. Um, I feel like we've kind of learned to forge our own life. You have technically, it's like you have a half or two. They're new. We're kind of like elders. So we've kind of learned how to forge. Because I didn't know that for really. It's like watching you never want it really. When I got in, I thought like you had everything. Like you're good. I still struggle with that though, because I'm like, oh God, I have this kind of responsibility. It's scary. Yeah, not because you're here, because I feel like you're rolling in, you're heading and rolling into everything. Learn, learn stuff. But it's kind of fall or fall. I didn't work on any motions or any of that stuff.
What did we do today?
The first meeting, and it was like, it wasn't. The grownups just, yeah.
All right. Can I ask you, do you want to have a seat? So I'm going to start with the three youngest members. And what we're going to do is, so if you have questions, put them out here and then somebody will answer them. I'll help. We'll see.
My question, I was just saying that I run into questions all the time. Like, wait, are we supposed to do this or not? And I have a question that I ask other people because everything is just kind of so far.
So looking for the boundaries of authority.
Yeah.
Exactly. The boundaries. We sit on commissioners and we're present at commission meetings. But the commissioners are already running themselves. So what do they need from us as commissioners when they're self-sufficient? They're doing a fantastic job. And I'm sitting with my watch, like, okay, you know. But I understand that that's our roles, to be the happiest community assignment. So we're in our role across commissions, like I'm over at police department. I mean, I have a police department, but there's no outreach. And I went, I did the initial, I interviewed, I did my initial interview. I interviewed, I went to the end, introduced myself. I said, what do you guys need? What do you guys want? They couldn't even tell me. So what is my role?
Anybody have an answer for that?
Your role is just here. You have no vote or shouldn't have a vote. Your input really should not be put in because if it sway a piece or a conversation comes to us, and that would be like voting twice. I don't know. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's kind of how I'd, I mean, I have. The only thing, you know, unless it's another board, CRTBO, or sitting on something, you know, the county level or the state level. These local boards that were involved, where they're just to say, hey, we're here. And that's it. I used to do this, got reports from the department heads. Or the chairman of said committees become and say, hey, this is what we're talking about. This is what we're working on. Over the past four years, that's changed.
It has changed. I think they got a commissioner reports that it's more of a political thing where people talk for the first two minutes of, you know, this is what I'm doing. These are the areas I'm back in. I don't think that that's what a report should be. I think in case the police department, there's a lot of information that goes out there that like, hello, thank you for asking for an hour. You don't have to call the police officer to do that anymore. You have to do that online. Public needs to know that. And I think that they get a lot from the police department. There's also a lot that don't. They expect that to come from us, whether it's parking rack or fire department.
I would just say on top of that, one of the reasons that the committees, someone started from the board started going was so that nothing was a surprise to the board as a whole. That you, more than anything, you genuinely are that liaison that comes back and says, hey, you know, the Greenway Committee is working on this. So that the board itself isn't caught by surprise in regards to the work that they're doing, whether it's in Parks and Rec or Greenway or what have you. And be the resource when chief needs a, when he needs to bend your ear and Commissioner Boone's ear to say, this is the need within the police department. And then you can help be that advocate and to explain it.
Great. Thanks. Next question. What was that about? Two questions?
That was a long, figuring out where we are, what we're doing.
I cannot just then jump in and say to you, and I know you're both doing it already, but Anthony's the go-to.
Right, right. I can imagine.
He's the go-to.
And the organizational chart.
Amber, write that down.
I look at the organizational chart and I see the commissioners, town manager, and then the partners, and then the town attorney on the side. So yeah, the town manager is the go-to person. He is the man. He is the administrator for the town.
So I would add a couple of things to that. One is, is that the short answer is, is, you know, cities, towns can only do what the state allows them to do. You know, inside the law ordinance, you really can't do it. Now, you can find ways to make it a law, make something happen, but that's a whole different thing. But, you know, you can only do what you've been chartered to do. And so, and then I'll give you an example. I was working with a town down east a couple of years ago. And several of the council people, this was at an earlier time in COVID, they wanted to, they were really, several of them were activists in our life, became council people. And they were really eager to get their friends, people, community to sites to get tested and shots and all that. And I had a comment to them. I said, you know, that's great, but you're council. You know, and that's counted function. And you may be able to figure out a way to be helpful, but maybe that's a letter or maybe that's a communication, but it's truly not your role to, you know, to tell people to get, you know, COVID shots. Yeah. And I, for preface, I say, you're not going to want to hear this. And, you know, we may agree to disagree, but, you know. And so that, Amber, to me, that's a piece of this, which is, is that, you know, there may be something you did before, we all did before, that was very important to us. But somehow when we become council members and, you know, commissioners, that some of that changes. At least because you're, because the role, you see you in a different role rather than, hey, you should just give blood out, you know, you're a commissioner. You give blood out. It's a big deal. It is big deal before, but not the same. Other questions? All right. Let's start. All right. Biggest success, biggest failures, biggest learnings? Any big question?
Just, I mean, we both talked about the fact that maybe we're just first term group of commissioners. COVID was a game changer. Like we said, sworn in December, March 16th is our last year. And then we were remote and we were just like, you know, we're still in our infancy of learning everything. And it's like, now we don't have all these ties. But I also think in some way it kind of forced us to reach out. And we have, I think we have very big communication amongst all of our board members. We didn't always agree, never will, but we found our way forward and.
I mean, we were kind of trauma bonded, honestly.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, really, because we had this thing happen. We're new. This thing happens. We don't know what the hell is going on. And then we're stuck, you know, the community looking at us with all this data and stuff being thrown out, like what's going to happen? And then we had plans that we wanted to get done for our community. And that took a back burner for at least a year. And in a way, like, there, I feel like, you know, we kind of lost that year.
It was positive.
And we were just treading water to get through everything. And then, you know, we started getting back in person. But even being remote that long, it was, oh, which one was that idea? Sorry.
It was weakness.
I know. No more of those.
That's right. We'll play with that.
But it was interesting because it wasn't just dealing with each other or meetings. You actually had to call people and talk on the phone a lot. So I feel like in a weird way, some of us, even if we didn't get along, we still had a bond there because it was the only way to communicate. So in a weird way, it forced us to be better communicators. So that's the positive to it.
I think one of the nice things you also mentioned out is that, you know, coming into the second term, you've been on the board before a couple of years of movement. You're obviously the person with the most amount of knowledge on the board. You guys were a little new and it's kind of like, a couple of people turned to us like, okay, how did this seem? We're really, oh yeah, we kind of, you know, do this, this, or that. Not that we're the experts, but we have some background and we understand how things have to move along. So that's it. I appreciate it.
I get like.
Process for everything. It changes all the time and can't ignore it. All right. Thank you. But I think that that's critical, not just for you two, but for the whole group. But I think it had, it just had an impact on all of us. And so how do we, you know, get out of that fog, guys? Because to me, we're still not out of that fog. Because I hope so. All right. Advice for the loved ones?
I'm going to elect to measure kid while I go first.
Do your own research. What's in that agenda is not everything. It's going to require you looking across the entire region of what's happening. What contracts have been signed throughout the entire region of any one decision. Keep a journal, dates, places, notes, calls. Been doing it, and we're still on the board, still doing it. Anytime anyone calls me about a town matter, or a conversation switches to a town matter, it goes in this journal. Yes. Own your vote. It's your vote. Own it. You'll have to explain it to voters. Don't hide behind, oh, we just had to do this. Let's say I did it because this, I voted for this one, I voted against it because of this. It's your vote. Respect others' opinions, but you don't have to agree with them. Lance and I will disagree on a lot of things and agree on a lot of things.
And a whole lot of things.
A whole lot of things. But at the end of the day, I still respect the hell out of Lance. You know, we broke bread together, drank together. I tried to get him to try whiskey. Didn't work so well.
And see, at, you know, for a baseball, if you stick 60 cents, it'd be good.
Yeah, we're biggies. That's one of my lucky numbers. So and the last thing is walk away and move on. At the end of the meeting, once it's over, it's done. It's done. I don't, I don't get too worked up if a vote doesn't go my way. I really don't care. We voted as a board and we move on. You know, does it suck? Yeah. You know, if something doesn't fall my way, there it is.
Rob and I came up with this list together. So some of those things that I'd added, but he's a much better speaker than I am. And I would just like to add that keep the town manager informed of what's going on. Contact them on everything you do. And don't be scared to pick up the phone and talk to the staff. You pay them a whole lot of money and they're very smart. So let's use that. Let's don't abuse them. Let's just don't get in their way. Let's let them do their job. That's all I got.
I had forgotten to include you with that. Do you have any advice?
Loved ones is great. Doing your own homework, owning your vote. Communication is key that, and I think that's been said, but I'll say it in hopefully a different way too. It's just that pick up the phone and call one another, talk to one another, wade through it all. Don't ward information to yourself. Share it. Because I think that's what, that's where you get some of the best, most sound decision making, where it happens. And then keep your lines of communication open with staff. Because like Commissioner Boone said, that's what they're here for. And that's what the big boss.
There's solid pushback. Okay. All right. So what I'd like to ask you to do is we're going to go around the campus. And what I ask you to do, answer two questions. One is, is if there's something like of a personal nature that you would like to share with this group that they don't know about you, you know, it doesn't have to be deep. Just, you know, is there something that would be helpful for them to know about you? It could be, you know, Lance, it could be, you know, you'll try to drink a whiskey with them, you know, next week. That might be something, but maybe not. All right. But if, you know, just something personal. But the other thing is, is why didn't you decide to run and serve? So Amber, I'll take a drink. We'll start with it. So is there something that you want this group to know about you?
No.
Okay. Thanks. I appreciate that. They know a lot from just that. So now, why didn't you decide to run and serve?
I mean, I've already put that out there. That's public knowledge. Thought the town board was not being clear enough with three-on-three meetings, as it is. I thought it was hiding things, not a lot of transparency. Thought we were going down a long path on a lot of different things. Town Hall, one of them, and $14 million for three quarters of the project. We burned bridges across the entire Mecklenburg County and state, you know, from the previous administration. And there were individuals on the board previously that were man, and I would say, yeah, mansplaining, or talking down to our residents, you know, you don't understand our residents. You don't understand why I have to do this. You, they explained it. They explained it. So that's the reason.
Good reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Talk one about, something personal about me that you probably don't know. At every meeting that I start, I look at everybody in this room like a shining bright in their mind. And I look at myself as a weak penny. And I've got to say to myself, if I got a good night game, great time, let me sit down with you folks. Why I ran is, I'd have to say Bobby Williams. I took the Hunter's Hill one-on-one course and I said, Bob, I want to do something else. He said, well, you can get a board adjustment. Whoa.
Was he trying to punish you?
You're a facilitator. You don't, don't. You know, I got involved in the town, spent two years sitting in the audience watching the board. And there was one meeting this week down at my left, on a traffic light, on Eli Busk, on Sam Fur Road on 73. And it was a really nice neighborhood and a school across the street. And he made a motion that there was no second. And the reason why there was no second, there might have been a second because there's a discussion and they just absolutely butchered it. And it was orchestrated attack, not only with the commissioners, but the staff, everybody. And I said, you know what? You might need some help, but you might not. That's it.
And what about you?
Something they don't have. I've been around so long now, if there's anything that they don't.
I don't know your dog's name.
My dog's name?
Yeah, I don't know anything about it.
I have two dogs.
There you go.
My dad passed away here to have a little, so I brought her home. Her name is Dixie Dixie. Yes, she's five. And then I have my little Ally. And Ally's 10 and she is definitely going to win. And they're both two little dogs. Thank you for that. I appreciate the assist. And then why I ran, you know, originally running because I got interested in everything Huntersville. I love Huntersville. Chose to run for mayor because I wanted to build those relationships on a regional perspective, put Huntersville out there as a leader and work together with the sound team to make it all happen. That's why I ran.
Thanks, Derek.
Oh, man. I had to think about that one. But you know, a lot of emotional feelings came running through. When you say a personal nature, my whole purpose in life was to prove that I can participate in the American dream. And that comes from a dramatic experience I had when I was in grade school. And I'll forget the by council names, things, Mr. Johnson. I'm going back to 1950. Mr. Johnson was a career council. And, you know, every student goes in to the junior counselor and they try to tell you where you're going to set your way into as you go into high school. Mr. Johnson told me that I will never be anything that I should take business, not business, but vocational courses classes. And I was in eighth grade and hearing somebody thinks I'm going to be a doctor. I wanted, that's not, I wanted to be a shopper. That was my whole goal. He told me I was not swan enough and that I had to be going to vocational classes. Ever since then, I've been trying to prove Mr. Johnson wrong my whole life. Public service was something that I just set my way into because I wanted to help people and make sure they had the opportunities. And that's why, that's why I wanted to be a police officer. Public service, been on my whole life. Government, been my whole life, being a public servant. Personal nature is to make sure people, they save the people. When you had a child who was not breathing, you respond to that call and you save that child, rewarding. When you respond to somebody that was sick, when you respond to somebody who needs help, they call 911. You get there and you perform your duty in the way you're trained to do. And that person survives, rewarding. Homicide detective, I've seen death in any way, aspect that you can imagine. Trains, hangings, shots, cut up, whatever, mutilation. And then when you have to go to that family and tell them that they lost somebody and the grief that it's all about, rewarding when you solve that case, rewarding. Why did I run? Because I still like to serve. Because I still like to serve. And I wanna serve. And it's not just because, I don't, and I try to eliminate the fact that I'm a person of color because that didn't keep me down. I'm doing very well. I achieved in my lifetime, my hierarchy needs. I achieved a hierarchy. So I don't need adulation because I already done it. I'm here to give back. That's why I ran.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I was gonna say something else as my, what you don't know about me, but I'm sorry that you had that. Ironically, I was gonna say, I actually have emotions and I can be emotional. I had a very similar experience growing up, being told I would never be anything. And I think it builds, it sucks, but it builds strong people. And that's why I'm wearing today, just in life as a whole. I'm actually terrified of public speaking and being in front of anybody. But I ran because of some similar things that Rob said that I felt there was, goes along with what he said. I felt like when I took her, I didn't have my voice heard and nobody was listening to me. And then as a resident, I heard a lot of people say similar things. And so I ran for commissioners that way I can be the person that would listen to those people that needed to have a voice.
Lance?
Reminds me of a commercial that's sort of there. So, something personal that I don't know. I tend to think I'm pretty open with everything, but then people tell me maybe I'm not. So, one of the things I kind of throw out to people is I actually have an associate of ours in philosophy and humanities and a PhD in computer information systems and systems administration. That's not to write about education. It's just the fact that I completely believe in papers. And that kind of shapes who I am. I know I need to do this to establish my livelihood. Philosophy and humanities, this is why. It drives everything that I do. It's how I would improve the world, how I would make my predictions, follow through it and try and do everything. And I try and look at it from a personal point of view. Why I run, I couldn't do far into the sixteen election, that's what I mean. And I decided that I'm just trying to find a voice, a common voice within the people around me. And I was frustrated because I wasn't able to find the right resources. And so I started going to local, Huntersville Town Board meetings because when I went to school and took various political science classes, one thing you learn is all politics is local. And if you start there, you'll get an understanding of how everything works and how it permeates that all the way through. And so I became interested, I became frustrated, not personally, frustrated with the traffic situation, how growth, exponential growth was occurring, where it was occurring. Lack of overall vision for what the government should be doing. And I decided I needed to set forth and try and affect change on it. So, it's a great learning experience.
I'm sure you have it.
I mean, I'm open book, probably overshare.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess, I don't know, the new ones, I mean, Amber knows this, probably Derek, I don't know. I've had at least six panic attacks of how to work during our board meetings because I've shown really bad anxiety with public speaking, hanging. The reason I ran-
Is this public speaking for you to?
This is, no, because these are like family.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, no, but you said on the dots, it's a completely different ballgame. And the reason I ran is a little baby named Grace came into my life. And I was holding her and I was like, oh, my God, I have to make the world a better place. Like, I have to be a responsible adult. I've been involved in town politics before I was even old enough to vote. And I thought, why not me? Like, why not someone like me? Why not an activist? Why not a local? And that's what really pushed me to run was I wanted to make sure that the town I grew up in is the town that my nieces want to grow up in and have the choice to grow up in. And that was really important for me. And there wasn't anybody on the board that looked like me or, you know, everybody. If my dad was on the board previously, we were very different people. And everybody on the board was so polished. And I was just like, let's do this. And I won. And it was the craziest thing that ever happened. But I'm very grateful that I get to do this and it's an honor. And like, I goof off and I cut up a lot, but having this role is the second most important thing to me besides being in it. And it's a lot of pressure, I feel, because you have, even if they don't vote, we are responsible for sixty thousand plus people. And I try not to think about that because it will cause me to go to a pandemic right now.
All right. All right, thank you. Thanks to all of you. It's a little different start, but I did that for a couple of reasons, just so to be transparent. One of those is that, you know, with COVID and you have new people and COVID and, you know, Zoom meetings or whatever you have, you know, just trying to connect so that there's some basis for continue kind of moving forward. So today, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna move into whatever we can get done around, I'll call this a strategy session, that may look like a strategic planning session when we get to the end of it, but it's kind of big picture stuff, moving down towards a level of concreteness. Hopefully, we'll get to a place where you have the agenda there. Hopefully, we'll get to a place where you can begin to think about goals that you want to continue on for next year. So it's not a firm commitment, but it's, you know, directionally, you know, out of these, let's pick five or whatever, let's figure out, can we get something, you know, to agree on and move forward. That will be, you know, that's the goal for today. And so we're gonna go through several processes around that. And you see the, this is called a pestle environmental scan behind you. This is a SWOT analysis. Then we're gonna start to play with a few other things. And then kind of admission of vision that you all value, that you all participated in. First of all, say thank you. Got all six responses. So, that doesn't always happen. So I appreciate it greatly. And you'll actually have copies of all of that when I give it to you. And I want you to just kind of stay with me on the page because you'll see everybody's responses, you know, on that question. So I just want you to read ahead. Fair?
Shared that information with anybody in this room?
Did I? Yes. My typical process is in terms of the mayor and the city.
So everything that we've written, the bag is already seen?
Not, not, not by, not by name.
And I did not open it?
Not by name. So it was anonymous, but not confidential.
Gotcha.
And I haven't read it. So if you ask me a question, I'll be done. I literally just made copies of Rick and this. So I don't really know what you're talking about there. That's a good question, Dan. I appreciate it. I thought I was, and said that we would share that information, you know, and that's why we want to share it. It won't be attributed to you. It'll be, you know, just whatever you said, I kind of paced from each document and made the big document. And so it shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to trace it. Like, you know, if yours was first here, it wouldn't necessarily be first, not the next question, the next question, the next question. Is that all right?
Move on.
All right. So that's what we're gonna do today. Does that square up with what you're thinking you want to do? So we did have a little time. At three o'clock, we'll be done with all that. If you all want to be done with it. Time's a concept for me. It's, I built a whole time. So I try to balance out what's going on. So we'll get there. If you want to get there, trust me. Trust me for that.
I'm the opposite.
You want to get on? I appreciate that. I'm three months the opposite, but we'll see if we can get on track.
Sweet, we're getting out to thirty on Monday night, bud? I'll take the over.
All right. The real reason people get into public service is if you can't have fun with somebody else's expense, what's the point? So that's my reason for getting there. And it was Tuesday and I needed a job. Okay? So, let me talk about my planning and where I think you all are. But first, we're gonna go over the role. Part of my role today is to facilitate. Part of my role today is to be a coach or a champion for you all, to try and encourage you all to do whatever. Part of my role is to challenge. And what that might be is when someone says something, I might come back and say, I might want you to think about that differently. Or here's my experience in that across the state of North Carolina and other parts of the United States. I'm happy to share all of that with you. One of the things I list for people's assumptions, so that I can hear, if you, you know, if it's there, I can try to hear it and then I'll feed that back to you. Another function that I serve is sometimes I can see things going on in groups and I'll ask if he wants, if he wants the feedback on what I'm seeing. And if you say yes, I'll share it. And if you say no, I won't. Okay? So you're free to do whatever you want with anything that I say or don't say. Those are up to you. So, and that's, that's the role of a consultant, to present things to your dining and joint. Let's talk about my planning for just a minute. In my experience with municipalities and in life, is I think we go, we go through life for a while and we just do things. We're reactive, you know, and, you know, you get out of your life and, you know, you go to school or you don't, you get in debt, you get a car, you get a house, you get married, whatever it is you do, but all of a sudden, you know, you're in over your head and then you're kind of stuck. But you kind of are reactive for a while. And then over time, you kind of, you say, hey, I need to start planning for stuff. You know? Not in my, hey, I'm not responsible, not now. Right? And it's like, so all of a sudden, it hits you and you say, okay, I gotta do something about that. So people then start to plan and you go from there. So the way I see Huntersville is, this is, Rob, this is me, not a decision, but an observation, is I think you all are in a place where planning makes, you know, more, formal planning makes more sense. You know? I don't know this to be a fact or not, but just in general, my experience is that towns go through a period of time when folks that control the town typically make the decisions and they don't, on an informal basis. Stuff changes, but, you know, they're guiding it, but it's, it's what's in their head that may or may not be out in any, it's not out on any paper. But at some point, you do put it on a piece of paper. It seems to me that you all are near that. And so what we're trying to do today is get you over a hump. You know, it's not gonna be, you know, slick and polished strategic plan in that sense, but it's gonna be helping you get to another place. And it may be a couple of twists in terms of if we can get, if I can get you to a further place if you all, if things present themselves, if that makes sense. So want to separate, so you plan so that you can do priorities, organizational priority, you know, organizational or city priorities, town priorities. And you plan so that people can say, this is what we're doing. And, you know, not talk about, what have you done and not done in two years. And say, well, I've been not too much on some levels, you know, some things, but it takes time, right? And so to be able to say, we're working toward these goals and so forth, these organizational goals. And we had to short answer to why you planned. How many of you have been involved in strategic planning before? Anything that you want to add, subtract, multiply, add?
Listen. I'm trying to think how to formulate the, sorry.
Sorry.
And not, it's not necessarily strategic for the town. It's another strategic plan.
Sure.
But just being able to take that fifty thousand foot view and set a course and then let the details then work after.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Derek, what about you, sir?
Well, mine's throughout the nonprofit, part of it's just a SWOT analysis. And that was just set up exactly to get the board. Every board has a dynamics, you know, whether it's positive or negative, to work together. You know which one to work together. So that was my SWOT analysis. And setting up goals and strategy and where we're going. Where we're going.
Yep. Sounds good. And yes, that's part of this, too.
SWOT, that's right.
So, we talked a little bit about strategic planning in general. So on one level, strategic plans can be whatever you want them to be. And on another level, they tend to be fairly formal and structured. And so things that go into a strategic plan can be anything from understanding your competitive environment to understanding what legal mandates are, you know, affecting you so good. But at some point, you come to figure out what your mission is. Mission really is, I was working with Hope Mills yesterday, and so when being a military town, when they make your mission, they think this way. Mission is this when it comes to a town or city. And so mission is really why we exist. What we exist is to do, to reflect that. Then vision is where you want to be, where you want to go. We'll talk about that later. You all have decided that you wanted to talk about organizational values and values that you all will use to make decisions. So we each put out some around that, so we'll reflect that. Then we talked about goals. Couple of things we're not gonna do today, more than likely, the environmental scan comes in around that and the SWOT that you get to goals. What we're probably not gonna do today is any forecasting type things. But what I would like to get to you today is if you get some sense of a vision, then I'll have a conversation with you about where you are. And then some strategic issues will appear. I don't know what those might be, but if you have something out in front of you and you know where you are, then you know what the big picture things are. You know, growth is certainly a part of that, for sure, right? But there's other things that may show up. So we'll see what we get with that. I'm not sure we'll get there today. Fair? All right. So we'll start with this. I'm gonna stand up now and I'm gonna talk to you about what a pestle analysis is. So a pestle analysis is really kind of an environmental scan. So what we're looking at, we're trying to get a picture of the environment so that we know what's going on in Huntersville. All right? And actually beyond. And so, let's see. I want to have you do it in particular fashion, but I'm gonna to, let's see if we can get an example or two. So we have political. So what is it in the political environment in Huntersville, in Beckenburg County, in the state of North Carolina or the federal government? Is there anything that you need to put up here that would say, just one thing, just trying to get an example?
We're nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan.
That's so important. We're nonpartisan for.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's the optics, we're not partisan.
Sure.
Parties that are here.
Correct.
That's the optics.
All right.
I think to some extent, the fact that we're a Dillon Rule state, I don't know if that falls into this category.
We're what?
Dillon Rule state absolutely does. Hugely affects what we can and can't do.
Okay. All right. So one thing that I might put up here, do you have ARPA funds? ARPA funds. All right. All right. Economic, what's going on economically in this town?
ARPA funds.
That, that is, yeah.
Anything else? Growth, right? All right.
Folks working at home.
Folks working at home.
Work. From home.
Socially, what's going on? What's impacting? COVID, exactly. Technologically, what's going on that impacts the town? Think of the organization for just a second.
Streaming.
Yeah.
Yes, or not. All right. Streaming, okay. Any legal things happening right now?
We're getting sued.
Getting sued, okay. It's just Saturday. It's just Saturday. What's the lawsuit about?
Which one?
Okay, exactly.
We're municipal government. We're always gonna get sued.
Always getting sued, that's right. Is there a legal mandate that's happening? Is the state trying to do anything for or against municipalities right now?
Always are. What are you talking about?
All right. So the state is, the state is making decisions about development, right?
Correct.
The Act of Social Activities, also is one of the-
Do you want? Here?
... legislation about, that we deserve alcohol.
Cremes.
We have to make a decision, we have to make a decision on-
Social districts is what you're talking about.
Uh, social districts, this is what you're talking about.
But it's just normal operating procedures.
Any environmental?
Ocular melanoma.
Do what?
Ocular melanoma.
And what is that?
It is an eye cancer cluster. I can talk to you about it all day, but I won't do it, it'll make you cry, and then we have the...
But what was it?
Because it's a cancer cluster, it's rare eye cancer, and it has, it's in our reach, yes.
It's in our, okay.
It's in our reach, and then also the colonial pipeline still.
Correct.
That's big, interesting.
That's the thing.
And what's big about that?
And it's more than 1.14 million gallons.
1.4 million gallons, largest spill in the state's history, or the second largest spill in U.S. soil.
Liquid gas plume that's reaching...
It's important.
It's very important, yeah. Okay, so you get the picture, you get the picture, so what I want you to do is pick up a pen, and you can go in pairs, you can go singularly, but I want you to populate this. And so, what I want you to do is think about these topics, and I want you to kind of drill down and think about, what is it about, what's going on in Huntersville that's affecting, you know, socially, that has some effect on what you all do? That's really what we're trying to do, or the organization, alright, economically, so forth, you know, I'll just leave alone for now, but any, I just want you to think about what's going on, and put it up here. It's not right or wrong, you know, if you put something somewhere, it's okay, you'll work.
Right, just all of you at one time.
All of you at one time.
I checked that.
Thank you, you asked, we're, I know it's...
If you wanna work in pairs, that's fine, we can do that. Sorry. Hold on, I'll draw, spare you a minute.
We'll be checking time.
Okay, close.
You scared me. You're responsible for those 20 stay-ups, I'd like to go check by.
I can do that, I'm not doing that.
I saw a lot.
You're going to quarter.
Film, as I see him. I mean, you know, that's...
What we can control, what we can't control.
So, is there anything going on, I want to talk about social, is there anything going on in terms of people coming to Huntersville that's causing you to have to react or act? Is there, the people that are coming into Huntersville, what's the demographic?
They wanna be close to their grandkids.
So...
Half wanna be close to their grandkids, half are...
Okay, so that's what we go there, and I'll go with the economic. Then there's a lot of that going around in North Carolina. Me either, me either, but there's a lot of it going on, for sure.
I think about senior citizens, what they do is talk about senior citizens.
Yeah, you're probably young people down there, yeah.
But people are always complaining, like, kids don't have anything to do up here, or like, the kids need to be more, we don't have anything for kids to do. What we do, they're like, little parts of that, supporting them, not like, that. Yeah, well, if they're not supporting, I guess. And not including them, like, in the stuff we have.
Alright, let me ask you two. Let me ask for the gas loss we found, so. Say what? Let's do this, it's about five minutes to 10, let's come back at 10, 10, and then we'll continue on, and then we'll come back and play with this a little while.
Jack is already down on break though, so she doesn't go on break.
Yeah, sure, they're their own flavor.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes.
Alright, we'll be back. So, I wanna take you through this, I wanna see if we can add to it a little bit. I've asked Sam to be at some point, if he has other things that make it up for you all to know, you know, but anyone else as well. I wanna try just to, one, learn what you put up here, and then the other part is to pull it in a little bit more, because we're trying to get a big picture of what's going on. So, I broke the nonpartisan, and Dillon Rule, ARPA stuff. Talk to me about, first, why, I think you brought it up, talk to me about why that's important.
Two things beyond it are being impact fees in plastic bag. Everyone, everyone knows, I would really love to see impact fees, makes perfect sense, it's a great way to manage growth, plan out things. State of North Carolina will not allow us to do impact fees unless it's the sewer thing for about $500, someone might know the specific. It's just stupid. South Carolina, it blows my mind that South Carolina can be a more progressive state than North Carolina in allowing impact fees. The, I believe it's Fort Mill has a $17,000 impact fee. And people have a misconception that impact fee is gonna affect residents, it's exactly the opposite, it affects new people moving in. It actually helps elevate the home value of existing residents.
So, the idea here is that you are bound to buy it, but don't like it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a passion thing for me, so.
Alright, so Mecklenburg County, what CMS?
Uh, Charlotte Mecklenburg School District.
Okay.
That's mine, the reason I put that was, Meck County and CMS seem to always get into some nonsense, and we're at, we have no control over that. People get mad at us over schools, and we have no say over schools. COVID, for example, the mask, that the towns had no say over that, but we get the brunt of it. They don't work well with North Mecklenburg, not just Huntersville, but North Mecklenburg in general. And it's almost like we're isolationist in a degree, because everything's so Charlotte-focused, up here is neglected, and that causes...
Our school system?
Yeah, school system and our county.
Okay.
And counties get, county, it's its own world, but those kind of things blow back on us, because people don't understand the political system. And if each one of us in this room has had an issue, or if you haven't, welcome. We're, things are out of our control, but we still seem to be the bad guys.
Okay, got it, welcome to politics. Alright, Dillon Rule not working together, what does that mean?
That went with the Meck County CMS.
Oh, okay, this, okay, not working together, okay. Our own law enforcement agency, LEA?
Local education agency.
Alright.
A lot of residents, per what she said, want our own school system, but it's a political battle that we would have to get approval and funding.
Yeah, the state, the state has to allow for another LEA, and so far, neither party up there, and one will take that on. In fear of recrimination of the teachers, and then also, the CMS, we want that CMS could, if they were so willing to ask the state to bring them up into districts, but CMS will not do that, because that means dividing power and... Correct. Alright. So, most of the reason that this is up here is because it impacts you in terms of, just politics mostly, you're not trying to do anything that is necessarily at this moment.
I mean, if they wanna do something, let's dance, but work together, yeah.
Yeah. Anything, wanna add anything on this?
I think they hit it, I mean, you know, we have the authority to look at, you know, older sort of municipal school, which falls into that, you know, Asian school teachers, I don't know all about it, but it's, CMS is too big, and I think people somewhat gets frustrated, because it's such a big... And trying to turn that boat around is tough, they, that's a big issue for us, and so we get somewhat penalized, possibly penalized, because we have that authority.
But you haven't used it yet.
We haven't used it yet, it's a big political issue.
Gotcha.
So, I think you hit it.
Alright. Alright, alright. Economically, so, infrastructure needs, growth too fast, density, transportation, open road, workforce housing, a lot of new investments, alright, factor that, inflation, workforce ignored, age of residents, and company. Alright, so, I have questions, so, let's talk about this, growth too fast, density, transportation.
I'm too fast in density, I mean, it's obviously, a lot of people think we're going too fast, and a lot of people think we're getting too much density, I mean, the big ticket items I see that bring out people to our meetings are, if we're doing major apartments, or major developments, it's intense, and you can be on either side of the equation, but people are...
It's intense.
Yes, so.
Forward or against it, alright?
Well, and it's intense, one of the main reasons it's intense is because of our transportation system. If you look at the roads we currently drive on, we've had one major road improvement since I moved here in 1999, and that was the widening of '73. There's been nothing else, other than what the town has taken on with adding turn lanes, and maybe some lights, sidewalks, etc.
So, you're not on the VOT list of life?
We are, but they keep kicking us down the road, which kind of ties back into the whole political issues that we see.
So, would you say that you're being ignored by the state? I'm not, that's a big jump, but I'm just trying to...
I think that when you're sitting in a county the size of Mecklenburg, and you have Charlotte as your southern neighbor, who sucks up all the oxygen in the room. And we tend to get kicked down, down the list, so.
Alright, so I'm just gonna put Charlotte center, how's that, does that work? Alright, workforce housing.
That was mine.
Alright.
Because as we continue to see lots of new investments in our community, from North American headquarters moving here, lots of companies relocating here, the housing that we do have, the cost of that housing, you're not, we're, Huntersville is, people are priced out of the market in Huntersville. So, how do we combat the workforce housing for our teachers, our police officers, our firefighters, et cetera?
I just saw a statistic yesterday from Wake County, median home price in Wake County, $413,000. Who does that?
Right.
Alright, questions, so, inflation and workforce ignored?
Um, inflation is something we need to be paying attention to, because of...
Takes all our money.
It takes all of our money, but also, we have local businesses that the price increases on food products can really be detrimental to them, and when our smaller businesses start caving, there goes our economy. And I think that is also critical to think about when we talk about, um, people in our community, like, the grocery prices don't seem like a big deal, but when your groceries are going up, and you're living check to check, that's the difference in people being on the poverty line and not, and that's where the workforce ignored comes in, because I think Huntersville has this reputation, this idealistic thing, that we're some thriving suburb, but there are a lot of us, me included, who are not part of that economy. We cannot afford to live in Huntersville, and I think that is unfortunate, that we have people that we want working in our McDonald's up here, but we don't wanna make sure that they can afford to live here.
Okay. Anybody wanna add anything to this?
I think they hit them all, I think one of the big things we're gonna struggle with, and I think, obviously, that's part of, some of the folks that got on board is, and I kind of relate back to Corning Hill joining town, which has sort of grown out. They have huge turnover, causing a lot of apartments and density and stuff like that. When I got here, I thought, you know, that is coming, you know, and folks are gonna get upset about that, and sort of be interested to see where we go with that, even though Huntersville has a lot more land, it's a lot more spread out. There's a lot of apartments and things like that being built, and it'd be interesting to see where the board and, you know, citizens kind of push the board on that. As far as economic, from a standpoint of businesses, we got a ton of business, we've been very lucky, board members have done a good job of inviting companies in, and giving them my opportunity to, we have land for that, to turn into providing new jobs. Workforce housing will be, will be a big topic for us to address, I think they hit all the different factors there.
Do they have a comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Thoughts about where, where, where you want work to occur?
We just finished up the 2040 plans, so, you know, to help guide us, but you know, I see that ever changing, so I think, you know, this board, future boards will continue to look at it and see if that's right, because as you just, I think, someone alluded to, different strokes and different foot, but I do think the density, the apartments, those kind of things will be a big ticket item for us to try to figure out in the near future.
So, the question that comes is how do you wanna deal with development, you know, really, and developers?
Derek, did you have some?
Oh, I was just gonna add, when you said economics, I was just on a Zoom conference this past week with the Economic Ability Collaborative, collaborative, and my big issue with the economy is that there's no living wage here in North Carolina. And with the living wage, when you have people working McDonald's making fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour, you know, folks can, politically, you have to change and have a standard wage where people can live on. And with the, the teachers, the police, the fire department, and I'm only trying to socialize, associate that with where I came from, I came out of a union state, where teachers had a union, police had a union, and we make, and you're talking about people, and also, civil servants had a union, whereby, folks like Anthony and Jett, they would make a comparable salary to what you are producing for our town, for our, as far as services for our community. for our town, for our, as far as services for our community. Um, so, um, I'm just saying that North Carolina has to catch up to the other states and provide a work, a living wage whereby folks can't afford the house, the forty-two thousand dollar houses. Um, where as I came out of, as a union state, I had, I had health benefits and so forth that were comparable to how our services that we provided. So that's where North, I believe North Carolina has to come up to so we can provide that for our, our employees.
All right. Thank you.
I got the taxes going with that, too, compare the taxes between New York and North Carolina.
Sure.
And then also, we've heard about it twice now. Growing up, fast food chains, and I think working there was a stepping stone for young adults in high school to learn about working in corporate or other worlds. And that's where we start. And granted, I'm older than, uh, almost everybody on this side of the table. Not this side of the table, that's very lucky. But our minimum wage, when I started working, was three dollars an hour, seven something. We're paying people fifteen to twenty dollars an hour for burgers, which also occurs a price cost at that restaurant. So we're going to see that too. So as those prices increase, what else exists? Everything along with the price of going to the store, the price of lumber, the price of concrete. So as we talk about, and we have no, no authority as a town to create a living wage to do anything like that for fast food or privately held establishments. Not so much for our public service or public works.
Sure.
Police and fire, our police and our fires, uh, not on our budget as far as payability. Um, you know, there, there's only some which we can do. Yeah, I think we're talking about something that's very big picture here doesn't, is not in our board.
I will say that time, you know, some of this has, with workforce housing, do you feel that the, the cost, you know, right now to get a one or two bedroom apartment in Huntersville is like, it starts at fifteen hundred, right? It's, and that's, that's the, that's the minimum, it's about fifteen hundred. And so because we don't have much of it and people, we are in a desirable place, they can then afford to, um, ask what they're asking for those rents.
Right.
Right? I, I mean, I think we've got to figure out the balance to the whole growth, density, all of that. But acknowledge the fact that whatever we do will impact some of this.
You all have control over these five things. When I, what, so there's fifteen things.
Right.
You have control over these five, and so whatever those five are, so that, the idea is, is what can you do about those?
Right.
Because the rest of it's not going to be, you know, not going to be helpful.
I put age of residents incoming because I think that we were talking, we were up there, that there seems to be somewhat of a shift of the residents here or the ones that are coming. And like, um, we said, there's a lot, you ask people, most of the time, people, depending on their age, either they just had children or they want to start a family, so they move to Huntersville so that way they can have that family feel. And so many people say, I follow my grandchildren. So I think that change of the age of residents and, and those things, we need to keep in mind when we're thinking about just economic planning for our town.
Yeah, our age went from thirty-seven, we need to average to thirty-seven point seven, which doesn't sound like a large jump, but it is.
The aver, the average age in Wake County is thirty-six.
I'm leaving five. And, and that's-
Think about that for just a second.
But I, but it is a concern, right? Because one of the-
You have two, you have two demographic.
Well, but the other piece is that for, for our kids, right? Now, I have a young twenties, I've got two in the twenties now, um, and they can't afford to live in, in their hometown. That's a concern. Exactly.
Given that we have options to act, act, and with budget tax rate, uh, we have a, uh, aggressive C I P. We got a lot of homes. How are we going to get those funded? Which I feel is pressure on the tax rate. And, and you've talked about, uh, people not being able to afford to live here. Our next re-mail is F Y twenty-four, so we'll get through the F Y twenty-three budget, okay? I think we will, but the assessor talked to us this week about wanting to come talk to you probably between mid-April and mid-May about, uh, the upcoming revaluation, and then he'll be back in the fall. So F Y twenty-three budget will be okay, but just, uh, you've heard the same things I have about how quickly homes are selling. And so I think there's going to be some sticker shopping. We've not done a re-mail, uh, they've been every eight years for the last about three times. And we're doing it after four years this time. And so there's going to be some sticker shopping, I believe, based on what the homes are selling for now.
Yeah. I'll give you, back in, it's in the neighborhood that I live in in Wake Forest, a house went up for sale like yesterday and sold today, actually it sold the same day. And, um, our house has gone up a hundred twenty-five thousand in a year.
Wow.
And it's, it's going to go up based on the price of that house, it'll go up another thirty thousand next month. I, 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 I don't, but that's what's going on. That's what's going on. I, I don't have, I, I can't even think of it.
The sale price of a home versus a timing.
Correct. Well, there's that, then there's, then there's going to be some taxes on the, all right. Socially, I want to move ahead real quick. So socially, what we have is COVID, housing, politically divisive, uh, socially right now. Inclusion committees, say-
Community committees, inclusive.
Inclusion, okay, inclusive committee, uh, communities?
Inclusion.
Okay. Meaning?
Uh, you're, you're, you're the kings of color, you're sad community, black community, you know, all communities, inclusion. You know, there's a lack of inclusion in all communities.
Gotcha. Young people got that, business?
Oh, business closures due to COVID, a lot of business closures, yeah.
How, how's that affect you all?
Well, the tax rate.
No, but I mean, how, how much, I, I get that, but I mean, is it a big issue?
Uh, you know, I've had one phone call, and that's from a small business, childcare. And a childcare facility that's probably going to have to close. Um, that's something that I've had that conversation around. The larger businesses seem to be still rock and roll.
Yeah, I just threw that up there, just to delay, to delay.
That, that's fine, I just want, because it, because it, you know, in, in downtown Raleigh is an example, and in some of the smaller communities, it's, you know, it's hit pretty hard. So I get that, some of the active communities, all right. Technol, technological, this was kind of light?
I feel like we do a generally good job. I mean, the screening is definitely something-
So this is not about whether, I appreciate that, this is, I agree with whether you do a good job about it. This is just about what's going on in the, in the environment. Like, for example, are you, are you getting new technology in Huntersville? How's it working? What's been the impact of that?
Police cameras, throw that one there.
I was about to say that. There you go.
All right, what else?
Parks are right cameras.
Parks are right cameras? Don't put that down.
I'll put it up there.
It's true, we're getting them.
Are we?
Yeah, after the last vandalism, we're getting cameras.
Cameras in some of our parks already.
And not all of them. And if we had more of there at Bradford, we are, wherever that took place, we probably have, uh-
We are blessed in the fact that because, I will say, because we are so close to Charlotte, we have high-speed internet.
Who does?
Do you not?
Oh, no ma'am.
You don't?
No, oh ma'am, I have the worst internet I've had in my life.
I always say, you know.
Never mind, okay.
Eighteen T is the only thing allowed in Oakville Park.
It's not a current thing, but I know it's been mentioned, and I know Concord is doing it, and some other towns are doing it for license plate scanning.
The what?
License plate scanning.
We have the, we have the.
We do have those. Let's start open checkbook up there too.
The what?
Open checkbook. We can't wait until she's here.
I don't know if we talk about that. Meaning?
Where the finances are uploaded so people don't have to report your request. They can just go on the internet and look at it.
All right, thank you.
Let's go back to technology.
All right.
What are those machines that we put in the parks if you have a heart attack?
A D Ds.
No, a D D, sorry. It's made of.
All right.
Yeah, we're not putting those in the parks.
I'm going to get it, I see.
Sorry, there's no way to move her outside of this town, this one, just try to keep moving, okay? So, legal. Is there anything coming from the state or the feds that you know of that's going to be affecting you in the coming months?
ARPA.
Besides ARPA? Have you got your front yet?
Yes.
So the, the effect is here, some, some, a part of, a part of.
The state, we, we got our, our, okay, so we were treated differently because of our non-entitled one unit status. And so, uh, we got the first tranche of our federal version, which is two point four million. We should get the second two point four million in June. And then we'll be subject to different rules, we get our twelve million from the state. And, and that's probably going to be on a reimbursement basis, and if we don't have a date of end, then we might get that.
Okay, so you got two point four, two point four, and possibly twelve. All right. All right. All right.
On legal, we throw property rights up there too.
Same or what? What about property rights?
Um, our decisions and property rights can get us sued.
Say a specific example.
Um, for example, if something is a buy right project and we have no authority over it, and then we try to cause a bust, change zoning to impact a property, we can get sued.
Can that follow a property? Do a, can that follow a property?
It can.
Okay. Environmental, anything else you want to add, environmental? So this would be, you know, in terms of your comp plan, maybe, you know, like, is there anything worth adding based on that, or any other things?
For me, I mean, I wrote prioritization, uh, state and county because, I mean, literally, like, when we tried to get Colonial Pipeline to come talk to us, you know, like, and, and like, it matters to us. We have a lot of residents upset about it, and we're upset about it. And so we're trying to get them to come to us to answer questions, and they're like, we dealt with the state, we dealt with the county. We all really need to come talk to us.
And we've only had one state senator, Senator Marcus, who's really been active and involved in it. But we can't get anybody else from the state to come out.
The governor's never come out. I emailed him over a year ago, he's never come out. The town governors never come out, they have not even acknowledged my emails. Um, Alma Adams, our Congresswoman, has been to the site and has addressed it. But she's only one person in Congress, bless her heart, you know?
And I think our problem is that because the spill itself, while it's, it has a Huntersville address, it's in our E T J. So it's, and it's on county land.
So, yeah.
So we've been out there, I mean, I know that at least three of us have, are, have been on multiple tours of the site. But to get any information?
Sure.
We're jumping to answers.
Yeah. All right, thank you. So when you look at that list, those lists, and you listen to the conversation that we had, and what comes up? What do you notice?
That we're going to be talking about.
To what run?
We're going to be talking about all the listeners to it.
Maybe, what else?
I see frustrations.
Frustrations.
I see passion.
Passion. What else?
This is our concern.
I see challenges that we need to figure out how to work with others to make change.
Okay.
Some people have learned that right.
Exactly. What I was making it was to. Anybody else? So I've heard all of those things as well. And so there, so I would highlight two things, or build on two things, or just reiterate. One is there's, there's a lot of passion in the room. You, you came here because you wanted to do something. You know, either stop something from happening, shape something, or just make, make it happen, right? And you care about Huntersville, very clearly. So I just acknowledge that. The second thing I would acknowledge is that, so a couple of things. One is that this, this list tends to give you a big picture of the environment, all right? And that's really, so that you can say, okay, now, we know that these things are coming. So for example, we know density, you know, we have to deal with the issues of density and, and rural areas, or we have to deal with density of this or transportation, and, you know, how are we going to do that? And so, you know, that's, that's one of the challenges before you. Um, the other thing is, is that you all turn this into sort of the list of things that you care deeply about, but that are way beyond, you know, the remit of local government. So one of my encouragements for you all would be is to, as you have those passions that are for things outside of this arena, there may be ways you can engage people here to do, it's kind of like my current example with the city council, it's a county role. So how can you as a city council, if you so choose, do something with the county? You know, but it's not your role correctly, so then you all have to decide if that's something, whatever that is, is something that's worth your time and effort to actually do versus, you know, making a phone call and letting it go. Am I making sense?
But I also think there's hope there too, because I've been told no. And I got a flippant vaccine plan up here from the county. So I think there's persistence in not just throwing it out there and letting it go, but like, if you actually stick with something, it can materialize. And I've been very fortunate to have that happen. I mean, we got, we got a vaccine plan, we had a mass distribution up here. Those were two things the county wasn't going to do, so if you stick with it.
But you got the county to do it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a great, that's a great example. You know, you didn't take that on as a city and say, we're going to do this. You said, how can I, you know, get that here from the county? So that's exact, that's a perfect example of what I'm talking about.
I also feel like what you're saying, I think when you were reading this, the things that are kind of out of our control, but we saw a lot of people nodding their head in agreement, which tells me a lot of us care about a lot of the same things. So even things out of our control, we can figure out how to band together and try and make a ripple. Because you never know, they might just watch this.
All right. Anything else you want to make out of this?
I think for some of the things that are in our council, um, I look at it and think we need to have some, I mean, we need to have some thorough additional conversations around to look for solutions. Instead of, you know, bantering back and forth, you know, like workforce housing or transportation or density, let's have some real honest dialogue around how can we move the needle to move forward.
Well, what's going to happen, I mean, it's already happened, I'm sure, is that developers come and say, I want to develop this here. What do you say? Well, if you say you can.
It's an option, right?
Done. So that's right, it can happen or not. But, you know, and so people do do that, and they do that regularly. And there's other options, but part of the idea is, is that, you know, you can manage that part of it. Part of it is just the comp plan. And so that gets you, so if you need for that to change, then that's a different conversation. What comes up for me, I, I think about, um, you know, this is, it's a little different model, but when I spent some time in the U K with Black's So Welcome, and, uh, you know, their model of density in, in general is, you know, we have dense villages, but a lot of open space. And so it doesn't look, and, you know, it doesn't look dense to these little villages that they are, but they, you know, a lot of people live there, but then, you know, a hundred yards outside of it, it's, you know, nothing. But hundreds of thousands of acres of open space. So everybody makes their own decisions about that based on all kinds of things, but that's, that's part of what's before you. All right, we're done with this. So I want to get you into two, four, six, seven, um, I want to get you, um, into, here, into, I'll move it this way. Get you to two groups. Move it this way. So SWOT analysis, they go by different names, SWOT, SWAR. And there's one that's kind of on the front end, which is called SOAR, which is Appreciative Inquiry, Constructional View of Life. Uh, any of them do kind of similar things. But what we're trying to do now is move toward kind of, got the big picture with the environmental scan. So I'm going to drop down a little bit, and we're going to do two things kind of simultaneously. The strengths and weaknesses are really more organizational, okay? So what are the internal strengths of the organization? You all can include yourself in that, you know, but include yourself in the organization, and if you need to separate it out. And if you need to separate it out, that's fine. If not, you can just lump it. But the internal strengths and weaknesses of the organization. So, you know, strength might be we have, you know, we have a loyal workforce, we have competent workforce. Weakness might be we're under staffed, or they're not paid well, all right? Or we don't finish projects, or whatever it is. Making sense? So, then the opportunities and threats are external, okay? So for example, your Colonial Pipeline, if it's a threat, all right? They'll be fallout from that. Uh, the opportunities might be, uh, you know, that the state will give you that, uh, well, twelve point four million on a non reverse basis. That's more of a fantasy, but it could be an opportunity. Uh, or that, you know, something that you want, you know, you might have some opportu, some opportunistic thing. Making sense?
Yeah.
So, internal, external. So what I want you to do is, uh, three of you go over there, four of you go over here, and then we'll switch and go play for a few minutes. And I don't care how you configure yourselves, but if there's more than three over here, somebody needs to negotiate. And I want you to, I'm gonna give you about ten minutes to play. And then we will switch. I want you to chat. So I'm giving you step by step minutes. We'll trip into the switch. No, but they should, they should. That's what we can hope. Exactly. That's right. Exactly. That's right. So don't you worry though, really. I don't need it.
Regional workshops that are accessible, that were all planned, wasn't planned yet.
Have you guys finished playing?
Step sad.
Let the players get in here.
That's what we're doing. This first name over here, last name over there.
It's it.
I'm always having bad experiences. And I'm like, oh.
Exactly.
Can you turn it off? Somebody else, or is it not my bad, or? Hey, who's my other favorite from the network? It's a thing, it's a real thing.
Hey, two more minutes and then we're gonna switch. You can switch now.
Oh, okay.
I was reading this, I'm sure it's not.
No, it's totally different. What? Can we just give it to you?
I mean, honestly, because.
You're a fucking hear me while you're mad.
Like I said, it's all places.
There's nobody?
I would have looked a long time ago. I can't tell if I earned education. Yeah, at one point, I got that.
You're supposed to smile at such a beautiful.
This is.
Coming more.
Harder than probably, I don't know.
Right. He reminds us of what I'm doing.
Threats and opportunities are external. So for example, I'll go sharp without sentencing, it'll be a threat. And so, for example, we shall kind of develop one or something coming in, you know, uh, I would put, you know, Colonial Pipeline, that is a threat on, you know, not during, not here or won't be here, but you know, that, you know, clean that up, you know, the tenure or ETJ. May have to do something about that. And manage just the, the objects, or maybe enough. All right, you're finished. Uh, and then we're gonna gather back. Strengths and weaknesses, looking for, no, wait, so what? Yep, I'll give you a minute. Another minute. Somebody, right?
Why are you talking to me about that? I'm everybody else.
Are you paranoid there?
I am. These are some smart shiny new money or not.
What is kind of what they do?
One of the ones I thought I shouldn't put out.
I, I, it's probably through my chain. I had, almost, I had a launch. I looked, I, I decided, you know, I wanted to see the amount of wealth I had amassed all these years. I was hoping for, you know, the equivalent of a lottery, you know, like a forty three D copper, or a, you know, safe or something. I still, I keep, I got rid of them all. All change. All nickels, dimes, pennies, nineteen, sixteen, or over.
I've seen a lot of regular dimes.
I've actually got a dime. Are you done? Close enough?
I am.
Maggie? You've got an ass you, you have to do that, okay? All right, if you, if you would, stand up, move closer here, and just kind of gather around here. So, as you look at the list of strengths. You don't need to not wait, you try. As you look at the list, list of strengths, first of all, do you have any questions? Do all these make sense to you? I think it's missing one of our greatest strengths. Which is? Downward. Downward? Put it up there. Put it up, please. All right, there's no questions, comments?
Canton, you're number three.
You gotta move up, man.
I bet. I'll guess.
Janet's first.
That's right. I'm moving short.
At least he's in the top four. You could have been et cetera.
Yeah, I must have been drinking this morning, yeah.
All right. So, unless, uh, weaknesses, uh, I have a question, lack of respect. So I can say something about that.
I wrote, um, it's not all the time, but it's in the air. And in my opinion, there's a general lack of respect for what people do, and what they can pull up and what they're saying.
So is that, is that for?
I mean, that's true of staff.
Okay.
Between us and the staff. Sorry?
You're saying holistically?
Yeah. It's not huge, but I know it's there.
That, that you all don't, that you all don't feel like you're respected at times? And that you don't feel that staff is respected at times?
Correct, okay.
By citizens or by each other?
Uh, I mean, just check, 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 check.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to get, it's not clear to me. All right, um, if you look through the list, everyone, is there any questions you have?
Well, question, lack of diversity in our commissions. Anybody from anywhere in Huntersville, from any background can apply to be on commission, right? So how, how is that a weakness? We're allowing the opportunity for anyone to join. If they're not joining, are we not doing, in this department, are we not doing a good enough job to get in those parts of the communities to allow them or let them go that there's opportunities to join?
That comes with my set of reach to residents.
Why can't, I can't see this.
Reach to resident voices.
Very funny.
Like, just how, how we're reaching residents to get them involved, how we're reaching them to get them to participate in surveys or joining committees or things like that, is something that I see as a weakness for us.
Exactly.
I think the other piece is, if, when I read it, I don't know who wrote it, but when I read it.
I wrote that.
I was thinking too of, because you don't check a box for diversity when you apply. And so, the question then becomes the board, it, it's also the board's responsibility to appoint. So I think the board has some control over it, and then this piece adds too. I think it's, it's a holistic.
And then, when do we need to appoint? You, like you said, you don't check a box whether you're a man, woman, or a certain race or background.
That's not, that's not the issue that I was playing. Lack of diversity, there's an input, there's an input that all communities can contribute to all the commissions, not just for black or white, but if you have that particular ethnicity on the boards, no, we don't check the box, but we all know who's who and who's ethnic and who's not.
I don't, obviously, because I don't look up people's social media. I go based off of.
Don't get excited, don't get excited.
No, I'm saying like.
Some people do, and some people don't. Most of the time I do, all right? And I also encourage people to lobby for the commissioners. Call the commissioners to let them know that you're interested, just like I did, when I wanted to get on the plane. Okay? So that's what people do, so.
I've always felt, remove the names and just give them a number, and they go straight by the qualification.
But that's losing, losing. So what I sense of. What I'm hearing is, is two levels of conversation. One is about, you know, checking the box or don't do that. The other is, is making sure that, that people in this community are heard. Are heard, right. Pure. Is that fair? That's fair.
And that's, I think one of the things, and I think we can do on this board, and I, I, this, one we're supposed to put on on Monday. I love the maps. I love seeing where everyone lives. Because, you know, I mean, I made a point of it on one of ours, that I said, we have no one in Sandro who is on a board. I mean, they're out there. And, because I think the fact that, that's been during your reports, are we enough of people that live.
See, I just don't care where you live either. As long as you live in this town, or there's, and I don't deserve, I just don't care.
I'm gonna jump in here. I mean, everybody's talking over everybody. I think what you did at the last meeting, when you said, nobody lives here, and we need to have that person, uh, voted in. That was fine, but you gotta do that for everybody. Everybody did not have that same chance, so if it's not fair for one, if it's not fair for everybody, it's not fair. Then you said that we don't have anybody, uh, in Skybrook that are on any of these committees. Absolutely wrong. I can think of two without even looking at two. So what you're saying to us is that we don't have anybody on these committees, and so we need to have that person. Not true. So I disagree with, with, with saying things like, well, he lives over here, so he should be there. And we should just go by the names. It's time to go. Sorry.
I like getting rid of the names. I like getting rid of the names, like getting rid of the maps. Because I personally witnessed really good people on the last board not get appointed to stuff because they lived on a certain side of town. And I got, I guess, shocked that people are that hyper focused on their own neighborhoods, that they could give, like, care less about the other sides of town. So getting rid of the maps, I think maps and names go away, then you just have a product. And that product is what it is. And I think maybe we should all be a little bit more mindful in even how we read applications, if we don't even do it. So that we aren't labeling people and putting them in categories. Because I've even heard complaints about age, um, in one of the other committees. And they don't have, the one committee doesn't have enough young people, enough people under forty. Well, I can't drag people under forty to apply for something. And if they're, they don't wanna do it, or they're not qualified to do it, we shouldn't be pointing them because of their age. The most offended I got during campaign season was when somebody would say, I only voted for women. That's why I voted for you. Because I got dismissed for my qualities, my education, my passion. And I was reduced down to my gender, and I don't wanna do that to other people in our town.
Can we jump in for just a second? So a lot of what you're talking about really right this second is process issues. How we, how you interact with each other, and what is, or do you consider or not? So I've just, I'm just kind of prove that back out. Can, can we refocus on this for a few minutes?
Sure.
Thanks. All right. So, that is, but so with this, just in that, are there any, the opportunities pieces? Is there any thing that you have a question on?
So the North Midland County, Iredow, what is that?
That's, that's me, um, there, you know, we can't work, you know, maybe with the county or the state on things. So maybe we unify our partnerships and the roads that connect us with these other counties that we touch. So maybe we have a little bit more power and say of the NCGA, or with shared projects. Instead of, you know, everybody, well, you're Mac, you're Lincoln. Well, we're Huntersville here, Denver, why can't we work together on seventy-three and issues like that?
How's that working at CRTPO and CMAS?
Iredow County is part of the, uh, yeah. Charlotte is fifty-two percent of the vote.
But we can maybe work collectively with our boards and their boards. But we can maybe work collectively with our boards and their boards and our legislators, maybe accomplish some stuff, instead of just going out and seniority.
All right. Other things you have questions on?
Yeah, community conversations, sharing information, just.
I did that, because I think there's some opportunities within our community, to share within our community what's happening, what's happening in various sections of our town. It's, it's about conversation and making sure that, we talk a lot about transparency, but I think what we need to be talking more about is sharing information out with the HOAs while within the communities at large. So that they understand what we're doing, because a lot of times the board, the board will talk for a year, two years about a topic, and then expect this almost seventy thousand residents in the town to know what we're talking about. And then say, well, why haven't you been following our meetings, and why haven't you been engaged? Well, this should be incumbent upon us to share that out to them. So I think there's an opportunity.
And when you mentioned HOAs, Anthony? Anthony?
Yep.
Our PIO Officer Kim, is she in contact with all the HOAs, where she disseminates a lot of the information that they generate?
The ones we have, so we have various contact lists.
Okay.
So one of her has a little bit of new property, so to continue to build that list, but we have various, as you know, HOA presence, our whole body of papers may not be having HOAs, so let's make sure we have a contact to go get around them.
I will. Any comments or questions on threats? Good talk. Okay. Good talk. All right. I don't know if I would say that there's agreement, but we'll, I'm not sure, because at least there's science. So a couple of things. To mail for some observations. So, I mentioned a couple of things earlier about process. So there's, so I'm gonna, let me talk about the SWOT for just a minute at a high level, and then I'm gonna go to process inefficiencies. Okay? As, as an example. So with the SWOT analysis, you have your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Now, people only put this up in a real different fashion, but this is actually a polarity, it's two polarities really. Now, explain what that is, and then it's, it's competing values, but they're interdependent, competing values. And so what you're trying to do in a strategic, in this kind of conversation, is this. Is get the best of both the strengths and the opportunities while minimizing the weaknesses and threats. Okay? Another way to think about this is, when you actually had goals to apply them to, then you try to mitigate these two things and maximize those two things. That's how you use a SWOT analysis. That's how you analyze using a SWOT activity. Am I making sense? Give me a different example now. A lot of the conversation this morning has been around process. Does that make sense to you? Just the constant conversation just ahead. And so, the whole idea with, there's been not a lot of talk about this at this point, that that's not a judgment, it's just a comment. We focus most of our activity, our energy here. We talked to you about a polarity map. So polarity map says, says something like this. When we are evaluating process, what's the results that we get? What do you get when you evaluate process?
Conversations.
You get conversations. You get.
Output.
Do both?
Output.
No, you don't get an output on, on a process. You get, you get an opportunity potentially, you get, you get agreement, maybe there's fairness, right? Fair? When you are focused on efficiency, well, you get output, right? What else do you get with efficiency?
Results.
Profit.
Results, profit. All right, if you over-focus on process, what do you get?
Stagnation.
Stagnation. What else?
Turmoil.
Turmoil. Chaos. Mischievous in the system, but I digress. What do you get if you over-focus on efficiency?
Lack of production.
Well, you don't get lack of production.
You get quality.
But maybe you reduce the quality, but you're, you're not paying attention to people. Right?
You lose humanity.
Yeah. What else? All right, so let me ask you individually to do something for me right now. If you were to, if you were to draw this infinity loop, let's say that that was perfection, that you all were doing best of both. How would you draw your infinity loop now, when it looked like? What would it look like? That's the question. If you were to draw your own infinity loop on those two, what would you, what would you say, where would you say you would be? Am I making sense, what I'm asking you to do? Draw your infinity loop.
Do you want us to physically, in all our own?
Well, you can mentally do it, but physically would be at the great.
Ask those questions, would you like to make them public?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Go this way? Because ultimately, it's all the same, right? When you do it, it looks like that. Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking. I'm thinking, something, something in those arms. All right, I'm already in session. Marv, we got more than a little bit. All right. So, I'm just gonna ask, and then I'm gonna see if there's any agreement, and then I'll see if I can draw it up. So, anybody? What, how would you draw that? Would it look like this? Would it look? Up here?
Draw a left side down, the right side forward, that's where I have.
All right. So some. Something like that? That? Not quite that low? Not with a, a paradigm, paradigm. Well, Stacy says that's what it is, but there you go. This, not unlike what you could say? Similar?
Similar, I think a little more, it's go to the bottom, right? Just to get that.
Okay. All right.
My slider is not committed.
The jury's not with me. Okay.
I have to, I'm agreeing with Amber, I think that you've got to pull a little bit more of the, yes.
Okay.
Well.
More vertical.
Yeah, yeah, more vertical.
Like, like this?
No, it's literally bottom end, and it almost goes the other side.
Like that? No.
Lance is coming.
Lance?
Yeah.
Sorry. Not like you can tell now, but I believe what they're doing is something along those lines.
Yes.
Yes.
Roughly.
So you think, so, okay, so Dan?
I had conversations to output at the top. We took conversations from the left side, but not from the right.
Okay, so you went just straight across, okay? Okay? All right. Thank you, sir. So. What do you make of that?
Looks like we have to work on process.
Yeah, but you also have to work on efficiency. So let me say a couple more things about polarities. When you, when you have the downside of one, and, and just for today, because the song died, like, you, you all are stuck here. And so you're getting these things. But when you get the downside of either one, you get the downsides of both. Because if you get stuck here, you're not getting much done. If you get stuck here, you're kind of rolling over people. There's going to be disagreements on each, from each of you, like, you know, Amber was saying, you would feel like you're running over people. Well, I'm not sure that's the case, you know, from where I see it, but it doesn't really matter. It may be that's what you have been doing, or not, I don't know. But all I can say is, based on what you all just said, this, this is, this is something that's keeping you stuck. And so one of the ways that you can deal with that is, I'll give you an activity, don't let me forget, but I won't, we won't go into that. But I'll give you an activity to do together, that will help you come up with ways, maybe ways you can work together effectively. All right? Which will then increase the output, and also, you know, because you have some, you have some deep passions about what's important to you from a process perspective.
Why aren't we doing that today?
Because that wasn't, that wasn't the purpose of today.
What was the purpose of that?
Strategic planning, kind of figure out where you are and where you want to go.
That's what we have in two weeks. I guess that's my confusion, we have a budget workshop session.
This is different than the session, this is different, this aligns and sets up the budget, that's why it's happening now, versus two weeks after the budget. Make no sense two weeks after, or like that. This is bigger than that by a lot. All right, where are you? Besides all the energy sucked down my throat.
Feel that, right?
Do what, Lance?
Feel that, right?
All right. So you don't need to address it right this second, but I want you to sit with it, because if you all work together effectively, you all are going to have to come to terms with those process pieces that, you know, you feel very strongly about and aren't willing to break on. Or, usually my experience in conflict is, is that it's around goals, methods, or values. And so, it may be that you have one of the same passions, or similar, there are some differences, but it may be that you're more agreement than you think, but you can't hear each other again.
We're stuck on the process.
I think you are stuck on the process.
Evidence.
So I think we can move forward. We'll try that. Yeah?
I think process, I think we need to work on process, really, we're gonna work on anything, so we're gonna get anywhere, we'll be working on process, but.
So we'll say, sound like a true process person. I think we should do something now. Okay.
Go with the process.
That's right. Process, process, that's right. Shocker, right above us, the process. Yes, sir.
I said that ten minutes ago, why are we coming on that today? You just, now we're working on it, you know? What, what do you think process is, and the process, or can you ask that to a question?
I, I think you can ask it, but that's going to take us down the path of talking about process. And, you know, that's a possibility, but what I would prefer we do right now, it's your meeting, what I'd prefer we do right now is try to go to the mission and vision. Because I think the, I think, I'm gonna say this, mission would be fairly easy, vision, I think there's a lot of commonality that you have, so I'd like to see that. And if you all want to do something different, then you all can measure it, and you'll figure it out. So, that's what the agenda says. What would you like to do?
Kind of like, I'm a teacher, so that's kind of like, backwards lesson planning, so I guess if we can figure out our vision, then we can figure out our process to get to our visions, and how to get to.
So there's. To get to the mission.
Well, our mission and our vision, but I'm saying, the other big thing being process, if we do mission and vision, figure out what page we're on, and then we can figure out our process.
What if I told you the town had a mission, vision statement already, that we paid our fifty-two thousand dollars for, and it's in twenty forty blank, right down right here? We've already paid for that, those words, why are we revisiting it to do it again?
I don't know. Is it, are we writing a town mission, vision, or a corporation vision? Is my question.
So the mission is for the organization?
But we do have one.
Well, and so it's not uncommon for folks to revisit it and say, is this one that we, is, is this good? So, we can, and I have it up on a slide, to look at, if you're fortunate with that, I don't know if you have. Because it's very common for, for commissions, commissioners to validate the mission. The vision is, is a combination, so it's not a community visioning process, so it's different than a common. All right? So this is not a community visioning process, what this is, is, what do we think, you know, what's the big picture, and what we think we're working toward? Now, you said, then there's the process, that you're talking about how we're going to get there, but the process that I'm talking about, Amber, is the process of how you all work together.
I know, but I meant, if we know what our, if we have a collective vision, and then our process, how we're gonna get there, then that needs, what actual processes are there?
Correct. I, I, I think Amber stood it, yeah, yeah. All right, so, what do you want to do? You want to do the mission next? Got to confirm it or not? All right. Maybe, maybe. You don't tell? Hang on. Okay. This.
Is that the same one that's in the twenty forty?
Yeah, that's a good question. Please stay with me on these handouts, page one. Better not, no. Is that the same one?
Back to the. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, that's fine. So, I'm just gonna give a little background on this one.
So, I had reached out to Janet for the mission, to see if we had one. And this was what, a, a board, Janet, how long ago? Before I got on the board.
Yeah, I don't know how long I've been, but it's been a long time.
Before I got on the board, created this. Huh?
It's not like nineteen ninety-six or something.
I'm not sure how long ago it's been, but that's, that was the last time we looked at a mission statement, because we hadn't done that since I'd been on.
That's a vision, that, this is a mission. Yeah, that's the vision. We'll get, we'll get there next. We'll get there next. Alright, so let me talk to you about a mission statement for just a minute, so then we'll, we'll, we'll confirm this one, or? Or come up with a new one. Alright. Let me ask, this, so let me ask the process question. How, how are we doing? You seem, you seem a little fuzzy. It's a technical term.
How are we doing in terms of our process?
Yeah, I guess, are you ready to, can we move on? Because it feels like you're, you're kind of like, kind of removed. Just checking. Alright, ready, ready to move on? Yes. Alright, so let me talk to you about a mission, a mission statement. Mission statement is really a reason, a reason you exist. You know, who you are. Who you are, Town Huntersville, what you do, who you're doing for, and why it's important. I want to separate a couple of things real quick, so, um, that's, that's a mission statement. I typically like them about 25 words or less, because people, you know, people will not remember them. And they can't talk about, you know, and really, it's very simple what you, what municipalities do. Alright, now let's say a couple of things about a tagline or two. First of all, mission statements, there's a trend with mission statements right now to be just a tagline. People do what you want, that's fine, if you want to do that, then that's something you can do, that's not a mission statement, it's a tagline. And the taglines usually come from vision processes, community vision processes, where we get involved and say, you know, Huntersville's a, you know, a great place to live, or whatever it is that, you know, you want to say about Huntersville. So it's not a tagline, it's not a vision statement. A vision statement is a picture of what you all are trying to achieve in terms of something in the future. You ever heard Peter Senge, Fifth Discipline, anybody ever heard of that? Okay, so Peter Senge, um, out of MIT, he wrote, looked at the early 90s with other people called Fifth Discipline. And one of those disciplines is, is around vision and, and the common vision, but he talks about a vision statement being that it's not what the vision is, it's what the vision does. And the vision, what the vision should do is it should give you, it should be something that draws you toward it. And it should be broad enough that people can fit in, that's not specific, too, you can make me too specific with it, you know, at, at the end of the day. But the idea is that you want it to be clear enough that people can see themselves and start coming toward it. Alright, makes sense? So I wanted to separate that from a mission statement. You all can have the both, but I'm just trying to separate them out and say, mission is about who you are and what you do. Vision statement is about kind of where you want to go, where you want to be. Alright? So for example, this may tread on a couple of toes, but likely it's just meant to be an example. So one vision could be your, you, you know, you want to embrace being a better community of Charlotte, that's what we want to destroy right now. Alright, that's right, that's right, so generally it's training on topics. The other, another vision might be you want to be, you know, whatever else it could be, alright? But it's not wrong to be this, or that, or something else, it's just a question of what you do with it. Like you could be a better community of Charlotte, or how you, how do you market that in a way that gets you the other things that you want? Right? So questions on a mission or vision statement? Alright, I'm going to say that's enough. So what I want you to do, if you would, I want to mix you up a little bit, and so I want to, um, basically if you will, join these two gentlemen, and if you four would work together. This is what I want you to do. Tell me if you want to work with me.
I don't care, I'm not going to break anything, and all the things that happen, I don't care.
Why don't I make it on you?
I'm not, I'm just not going to play you.
Alright, so what I want you to do for the next 10 minutes is look at this mission statement, look at those mission statements, and. Just, so what I'm looking for is, you know. So if you want to rewrite one, you played off version last week, or what you do, what you look for, who you look for, why it's important. And so even present one or say, you know, number three looks really good, and away you go. 10 minutes.
Does everyone remember which one they were working for? Because I do not know.
I have one that's.
Why do you say one? I don't, we can only have a person. I think I know.
It's one of the two, I know.
Both of us.
That's right, that's right, that's right, I'll be calm on that. Your best vision, there's partially vision in that, and it's a, and our challenge is. Yeah, correct. It's raised to 20, it's raised to five, five words. Correct. So it's, you know, it's lost, it, you know, yeah, you know, that's exactly right, that's exactly right. That's right. Yes.
Okay.
Go in, out, and walk out, no way else, the last important plan, you gotta run.
I'm sorry, I didn't really did.
Seems part of the, makes this part of. I mean, that's part, that's in it. Correct, correct. I, I worked with, I also said that I worked with, I used to have on a newspaper in Ramona called The Cary News. And, and if you think about it from a certain perspective, it's like, wow, it's, it all made a lot of sense, but I did their mission statement with them, and it took them three hours. And the phrase that they were hung up on, that the editor would not let go of, was had an acceptable profit margin. You know, so it's like, we have to make, we have to make money, you know, but it was like, everything else was, you know, they never argued over that, it was just that one. But they had to sort it, they had to sort it, so it worked out.
What does it mean to each individual?
And so how, which word?
All of it? What does that call it?
I'm always right, I mean, but what does it mean to you? What's it mean to me? Correct, correction.
Fair, equitable, clear to the public.
That can be a pronoun of.
Yeah, but they're not, so.
No, they're not.
Fair is also always in this decision, you're referencing the question you have to say.
Right, so you mean fair is both relative to your point?
Then again.
So if we need to, like, whatever gentality, I'm just going to gentitate you and just take the one.
That was getting us out, I feel like that was the seven, there's key services, that's what they're going to work on.
But it says you're not transportation, that's not, you're not, you're not, you know, consulting for, you know, this, all you are, the district government, providing municipal services now. Those may change, right, some folks offer, you know, some folks offer other things, but whatever we use, not services are, that's what you provide.
I was looking at words, because I think if we find, yeah, an analogy, if we're saying, oh, I think this is the same as only find the same word in page one, then you know those are words that are important.
How we do it? Good, good, still need one more time? Okay, alright. Exactly, that's when I get hungry, this. We'll give you about five more minutes.
Check, 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 and maybe that's not a bad thing.
Yes, I agree. Whatever they were.
I'm one of the one, you know, community, just one job, but at some point we have to make, this is coming. That was in so much of the wood. What, yeah, then this, what is?
Because we talk a lot about customer, like, customer, so the grid says that, so that's going to justify it for me. I'm actually, even if it's a small, this, they'll just. And how would they, it's how can we learn, it's a little learning, how would they do it?
Well, I'm learning for, for, for. I was learning through our mesh. I don't know. I'm trying to show you a whole lap. I'm going to shoot it without losing time. Where do you have so many chain blockers? Or for business? Those remember, like, trying to try, they used to do the amount of all, but. No, it's not the same, they should. I don't know. I thought, I mean, they're leaving, they're leaving, they're leaving, and then I have trouble for my speaker, or for me now, or when, probably they will read. But we're kind of, we're open, as we're listening. I mean, it's about, they're not, they're not, they're struggling, that, I'm asking you.
Come back to the.
That was a little crazy, that's not, I was looking here, the one.
Yeah, it says, that's statement, not in a way, so you go there all the way. Drew Root, Dan, Drew Root.
I just want to be sure that you're on task.
That's right, and Dan, they're not, but that's okay, but they're on their task.
No, no, we got different intentions.
Lance, good shot, good shot. We're doing what we thought we were supposed to be doing, what we were told. I think that's exactly right, you stick to the facts. Answer. So what do you expect from progress?
Well, that's my question, how should, should you? Should we?
I thought the folks wanted to say, you know, what do you do, water, sewer, HR? No, you want to say municipal services, I mean, I'm just saying, so.